Somewhat confused, but working on it. Okay.
We hope not to confuse you more.
We're back.
Yours confusion was last year, so.
Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully it's better this year.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's easier this year.
Okay, we're back. We are now talking about HCDD.
What page are we gonna start on? Do you know Susan, were your goals?
112.
112.
Yeah, it's 112.
Thank you.
Just, just so you know what, how we're gonna, how we'd like to do this. We'll go over goals and objectives first. Then we'll go over any organizational changes, et cetera. And then we would go over the summary financials up on top. And then the last thing we'll talk about is critical items.
Okay.
Okay? The floor is yours.
Okay. Our goals for this year. We plan to, let me get my ruler.
What page?
About 112, I think.
Plan to increase homeownership, homeowner occupancy in single-family homes by 3% in FY '18. And I am tracking those with Dan Phillips. He's the supervisor for the Eastern Shore with Estat. So yearly, I get a spreadsheet by all property types and homeowner versus non-homeowner. And that break down, that downed us a little bit more, so that's how I'm tracking those. And I just started that last year. Code violations, we brought into compliance 92% of the time. And we're real close to that percentage right now. We're teetering on that. We have a really good percentage rate of compliance. And also with, in court, that's 100%, so can't brag about that enough. Knock on wood. I don't, we have court tomorrow morning, so I don't want tomorrow morning to be my.
You put the rim on yourself.
I keep saying that, I know.
How many, how many weeks is it for your streak?
Years, four years.
Oh, years, okay.
Yeah, four years. Yeah, that's why I don't wanna miss.
It's like the guy, it's like the golf game and the guy that's making the putt and says he hasn't missed a three footer in ten years.
Yeah.
And he misses a three footer.
Let's not talk about that anymore. Yeah. 1,200 properties will be selected for random comprehensive inspections in FY '18. Right now, we're doing roughly around 1,1100 properties per year. I do, gonna, I wanna be talking to you guys about that sometime this year in FY '18 about, right now, it's a mandatory program. I'm sorry, it's a voluntary program, it's not mandatory. We're getting a lot of landlords refusing to let us in, a lot of them. I would say probably about 80%.
Yeah, let's, we gotta talk about that.
Yeah. So I will be back this year, this fiscal year to talk about it. Cause that, what that's meaning is that we don't know if a lot of them are in compliance. House seven newly chronically homeless individuals and maintain the 13 currently housed under the Housing First program. And we can discuss that a little more when Theo gets into his.
Okay.
Assist in elimination of veteran homelessness. That's something that we've tried to touch on this fiscal year that we're in now. We, we hope to broaden that more this, this coming fiscal year. Achieve two new grants in FY '18. And Ms. Stam is currently searching for some new grants for this coming fiscal year. She's, I just met with her and discussed a few potential ones.
Questions on the goals? I have one.
Yes.
A standard question.
Yes.
Aggressive goals. Does the financial package that we're gonna be talking about, are you gonna be able to achieve those goals with that package?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The only one that we would not be able to, with the financial goals that we have, the financial needs that we have to achieve these, they're housed in the budget. The only one we would not be able to without the financial means would be number five for the Housing First program. That, what Theo's gonna talk about.
That ties into number seven, though.
Grants.
Yeah.
I figured it would be, so, okay.
Yes.
Understood.
Number one is sometimes difficult. And I don't know if that's something that, you know, any local government has the full financial capabilities to do so.
Part of that's market.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, that one is, is hard for us to get a grasp on. What we, we will try to do what we can with our urban renewal effort that we're gonna be acting on in FY '18. We're gonna do what we can with that to incentivize that. That is not, as you know, the market, it's not something that we can.
Yeah.
And as part of our first priority, and I've worked with finance on some legislation to rehabilitate, if you will, the tax abatement program. So there are things that'll be coming before you that can work towards that goal to incentivize.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to priorities.
Reorganize the community development initiative following the current code for urban renewal, for urban renewal. Plan and strategically organize neighborhood improvement through grants administration, code enforcement, and incentive-based programs in the three major areas of the city. Just like Theo and I have just both touched on, and that ties into number one of the, of the priorities we just talked about, the goals we just talked about. That's gonna help, we hope, bring in new homeowner occupied structures in the three areas that are very dense in rentals, dense in vacant homes, and condemned homes, hopefully to incentivize homeownership and revitalization of those homes. So that plan we brought to you guys for review. Reduce the time individuals experience homelessness in Salisbury with the addition of a homeless services case manager. Achieve 80 to 9% of housing retention of the participants in the city's Housing First program through their first full year of stable housing. Dependent on grant funding, stably house an additional five to seven chronically homeless individuals. Assist in the elimination of veteran homelessness. That's something that I just said we, we wanna tap into more this year. Advance legislation to the legislative body creating a more robust rental inspection program to require landlords to allow mandatory comprehensive inspections of all registered rental units within a three-year period. Landlords will be penalized with municipal infractions if they do not allow the inspections to take place. Research new grant funding for neighborhood revitalization using new aggressive strategies for researching these grants not yet used in the past. And we've, we've just started doing that more aggressively. We've, we've got some that are coming down the pike.
Questions?
Are we on the, I guess it would be number two and three? And I think tomorrow night is the last meeting of the START program, which is gonna be reorganizing. I, I would suggest also, cause I think homelessness and veteran homelessness, I think some of it is tied to the addiction issue. And then I think, is, is that initiative, are we gonna be bringing that in with what you're doing?
So, to answer your question, we'll be talking about this a little bit when we get to COAT. The person who currently oversees the COAT program is Tasha Jamison. I forgot to mention Lori Brewster did wanna be here today to talk about it, but, talk about COAT, but she had another engagement. And Tasha Jamison, she's the supervisor for targeted case management and really just all case management. So the COAT team actually falls underneath that. And Tasha also supervises the case manager for the homeless program. So in that person, those two programs are fully integrated. So she and I work very closely on that, on that issue, so.
So the person, the homeless services case manager, is that a new position or is that?
Yes, that's a nearly entirely grant-funded new position.
And that's in the budget?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And another question I have is, it says achieve 89% housing retention. How are we doing with the 13?
100%. Except for the guy who died, but, you know, other than that, can't control that, so.
Sorry.
They're very successful. Theo, you never miss an opportunity to say something odd.
Well, I'm just being honest.
Keith, Theo.
No, I.
Passed away.
Passed away.
In my wife's country, at the hospital, they tell them that your family member, your family member is going to Paris.
Paris?
That's, that's what they tell me.
You went to Paris.
I actually did go.
Never mind.
It could get very confusing.
I won't even go there.
Your mom flew to Paris.
No! No, no, she, she really flew to Paris.
Wait, okay. All right, those are my questions. All right. Organizationally, talk a little, let's talk a little bit about organization. Cause things are changing so rapidly. I feel like I'm in Oz.
All you have to do is tap your feet together.
I know.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a?
Do we have an org, we have an org, don't we?
I actually have not gotten my org chart back.
There we go.
There it is. Okay, so we have, there I am. There I am. And then Debbie is the Community Development Assistant Director. And we have, Trish is the office man, Trish Morenton is the office manager. Senior Code Enforcement Officer is Dan Hoag. And there, Theo is the Housing and Homelessness Grants. And then the, the position we were just talking about. Actually, that's not, that's slash, Theo is the slash Grants Manager. And then we have the, off Trish, we have the Administrative Support Associate. And then Amber Mosley is the Administrative Records Clerk. And then we have a staff of Code Enforcement Officer, one, two, three, four. And then the Nuisance Officer, that's grant-funded, that will come off this, with this budget, will come off. And then that would be a full-time Code Enforcement Officer position if the budget is passed. Is that, can I talk about that?
Yeah, let me apologize, because there's, this is actually, I think, last year's.
Yeah.
No, I thought last year, I thought, there, I don't, there wasn't a, there wasn't an Assistant Director. I thought Debbie was kinda out.
Yeah.
But it's like this year, you've.
Yeah, this is not.
This isn't.
Yeah, this isn't what I saw.
No, no change, no change to Debbie. She is the Assistant Director, but she, but, but she's not in the chain of command with the other positions.
Yeah, she's not.
Essentially parallel, but she's a higher rated position given her.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Role. The Office Manager part is correct. The Senior Code Enforcement Officer has not only the one, two, three, four, five positions shown, but a six that was added. The Nuisance Officer is not a Nuisance Officer anymore, and it's a Code Enforcement Officer. The Housing and Homelessness slash Grants Manager has the new grant-funded position that Theo mentioned.
And, and the two, and the two AmeriCorps.
And the two AmeriCorps positions.
So, yeah.
And then the, the one for, that was from BPI?
We just mentioned, yeah, that's what I'm saying. So it's one, two, three, four Code Enforcement Positions, plus the Nuisance Officer, plus the additional Code Enforcement Position. So it's six Code Enforcement Officers under that Senior Code Enforcement Officer.
But you're saying the Nuisance Officer is.
Has become a Code Enforcement Officer.
Yeah.
Just transitioned.
It's just transitioned into that new, but that position is coming off.
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, not a Nuisance Officer anymore. It's just, it's a one-for-one trade.
Kinda like a promotion.
Yeah.
Kinda like a promotion.
We're taking, we're taking the funding that we're currently using for the Nuisance Officer. And part of that is being used for the Homeless Services Case Manager.
And part of that is because that was a largely grant-funded position that is, we're not likely to receive long-term.
Technically, it's supposed to be like an increase in services year over year. So eventually HUD would just say, you know what, after five years, you're not actually increasing any services, so.
Can we use this as an opportunity? I got an email from Jeannie saying that in addition to the essential item that was approved of the nuisance operator going to Code Enforcement, that had been grant-funded previously, there was gonna be another Code Enforcement Person that would have to be funded at the council level.
Right, because of the.
No.
No.
Yeah, that's, so that's not correct.
That is not correct at all. It was just a move from BPI into this position.
So that.
Into this department.
So is the project manager position?
So there, is, was it a move that did occur already, or there's an addition?
A funding move that did occur already.
All right.
Or did occur for.
So I don't know, I have to, I have to forward that email back to, I'll, I'll work with Jeannie and make sure, you know, we get it. And she thought there was one in addition to the nuisance operator.
There is, but it, it came from BPI.
Yeah, this is transfer.
Yeah, but how that originated, she said that Henry would not be coming.
That's correct. The individual is not following, the position is.
Okay.
The position and the authority, the all responsibilities, and this was in our presentation, that all Code Enforcement, not just of the Housing and Property Maintenance Code, but also Building, Zoning, Signage, all of those pieces would be shifting into Housing and Community Developments Code Enforcement Division.
All right, so we did make the financial transfer, you know, for, for Henry to go over there.
Yes.
All right.
We did do that.
But if, but if he's gone, we, we took his, you know, we, we took him with us, meaning the pet, so.
Now here's.
Where's he going, where's he gonna get funded in?
Project Manager position, which was created as an essential, which was added as an essential item in Department of Infrastructure Developments.
Gotcha.
Henry, you're is going into that position.
All right.
But the position created was moved from BPI.
Okay, let's get into the.
It's like the Minority Report thing. You just gotta imagine.
Oh, I've been doing a lot of that. Okay. It's gotta be here somewhere.
So, so think about it, this, position and responsibilities left BPI and went HCDD. Body, the person, the individual did not.
Okay, where are we on the, what page are we on for the finance summary?
Are there any questions on that org chart, I guess?
No.
That's page 114, 47.
There it is, okay. Anything you'd like to highlight?
No.
Well, I guess the same thing.
They are merged this year.
They are merged.
Okay, so that's gonna make it a lot easier than having it separate. Nothing to highlight on this, other than the fact they're merged is gonna be a lot easier on us than to have two, two separate to manage.
So in the Personnel Services, we have that same situation.
Correct.
Where it's just a, in a different box. Last year. Okay. Is the operating expense increased? The percentage is high, but that's, I assume that's because of the combination. Is that right?
The top line is merged. And this, this should have been merged up in here in the schedule and not being, not being shown here. So when we show the adopted, we'll delete 25.3 and just add those totals in the lines above. Just present 125.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
25.3's will not be here when we show the adopted budget.
Okay.
And it also looks like probably the other piece of the operating expenses is the weed cut, I guess grass cutting, where we're actually aligning it to, I guess, last year, we budgeted 41,000. It looks like our projection this year is 51, 53,000, but we're gonna budget 51,000 to be more appropriate to what the expense is gonna be. That was the only other major increase that I saw as far as operating expenses.
Grass cutting, going to grass cutting.
Weed cut, I guess, is that the, I assume this is.
Grass cut, weed cutting is, that's flat, that's the same, we didn't, we did the same.
Oh, yeah.
53, 6, 53.
How come it's both revised budget that went down for 2017?
Because we.
Did any operating expenses come from BPI? Mayor, do you know?
I don't think so. It was just personnel.
I guess the difference between finance and mayors, is that the 20,000 for capital off?
Yeah, they.
Oh, yeah.
Is that the 28.6?
Susan, do you know?
I don't know. Uh, the 20. I don't know about the 20, the. The only 20,000 I had in here was for.
Is it rent?
No.
Yeah, actually, no, that wouldn't make sense. Or not, not rent.
The capital payment of 20,000.
The Comcast stuff.
Yes.
That's what it is.
Yeah, that's our Comcast payment.
Comcast.
Okay. The, the cap, what's in, what's the capital outweigh in the, the 28.6? What is that?
That's the car.
What is it?
The 20,000.
28.6.
That's the vehicle.
That's the vehicle?
Mm-hmm, but releasing that, that's like a ghost number, isn't it, Keith?
We always report it as a capital expenditure, but it's also neutral for its funding, cause it's funded by a lease.
Releasing it, so we're actually not expending that whole amount this year.
So that's the least expen, that's the expense for the vehicles, and then you have the lease proceeds of the same amount.
Right.
And those two zero out, and then you'll have the actual lease payment.
That, the actual total lease payment is like 5,400 for this year total.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Comcast charges that much?
Can we find it, can't we find it, Theo?
That's what I'm trying to look for it.
I'm looking for it.
Tap into the online down here, right?
Is it a total or something?
What are you guys looking for?
The 20,000.
Did I mention operating?
Uh, the operating, there was a big fluctuation in, in the internet. It went from 3,000 to 30,000. It says increase due to Comcast internet service necessary for this location.
That's what I thought.
How much was it?
27,000 increase. Right there.
Wait, what?
27?
That's bizarre.
That doesn't make sense.
That's bizarre.
Well, last year it was budgeted at three, this year it was budgeted at 3414.
Which line item are you looking at?
Is any of that MDT's?
54606.
54606?
Is any of that MDT's?
All right, so let's see.
It's 2,600.
Uh, so it's over here, it says Community Center Operations, 25,000.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Also, so, so the comment might have been last year's comment, the mayor level increase was 25,000 for the Community Center Operations.
Gotcha.
Yeah, Comcast is 2,640.
That makes sense.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say 26,000 is.
You gotta read the second line, I read the first line.
This is, this is our total, this is our total increase, correct. The 20,000 is our total increase all the way across. So like 800 of it, 806.51 is our Comcast Management Agreement increase. We always have a, a small percentage increase every year. 1,000 of it, I had to increase my summon server because our court cases are higher. We're, we're writing a lot more citations. Boarding up houses, I had to increase $5,000 because we're just having a lot more houses that need to be boarded. Rubbish removal, I had to increase 2,300, and that's just based on the number of.
Did we recover any of the calls from boarding up a house?
Yeah, it goes back into the general fund.
When we, when we do.
Yes. When, you know, people pay their bill. And then going on down. Telewire Protection Plan was 888.66 more.
And then you also have rent this year, too.
You rent, we had 150 dollar increase in dues. And we did have decreases, too. We were able to decrease 390 dollars in miscellaneous printing. We were able to decrease by 806 dollars.
Yeah, we covered all of them.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We covered critical ones.
Yeah, so that's, that's just a total, I, I understand that now, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Boda, in terms of the rent, the rent actually remains the same, it was just changing lines. So it went from new lease to existing lease. I thought, I thought the same thing as well.
I've given up for this. Really, I've just, that's it. Just look at the big number and.
Yeah, sorry. That makes sense now, that's more understandable.
So the, the Community Center, we're putting that under operating?
Yep.
Okay. And is that where we're putting COAT as well, Keith? Operating?
I think it had its own promotion line.
Okay.
Just like the same object that it was when it was in police.
And do we have a same object for the Community Center?
As far as I know, there's not an object for the Community Center.
Okay.
And this is the other piece of the shift, I think, where we used to have a line, just one line for community promotions, and then now we've taken that out, and then that's kinda been put in the appropriate department. Cause that, Councilman Iyrton had a question about that. And I think that's kinda, this is a piece of that discussion that he had.
Would we be able to create, I don't know, I guess we can talk about it. Does that have to be decided at council, Keith?
No, we can just do a transfer.
Okay, we'll worry about it later, okay. Do we wanna talk about any other transfers at this point, transfer outs? Mr. Corddry?
Sure, if you wanted to explain.
Sure.
You know, that we do have a transfer out.
To, well, yeah, we have one transfer out. So, well, at council level, we also talked about moving COAT from PD to HCDD. Last year, because it was a budget ordinance, budget amendment, COAT was just put under PD. But I've actually been the point person with Ms. Brewster and Tasha on the COAT program and have the reports. And so we had suggested moving it, and Mayor and Julia approved from Police to HCDD. Do you want me, Mayor, do you want me to get into the COAT program, or?
It's up to council.
Or council.
I wanna hear more about its status.
I mean, I.
Yeah.
Okay, so first of all, the COAT program, they did actually receive a national award from the National Association of City and County Health Officers. They are determined to be a promising practice at this point, which is below a model practice, which is below evidence-based practice. It's, there's tiers in terms of these things. But it is recognized as something that, you know, is getting national attention. As a result of the article that was in the paper, someone from California in San Bernardino County actually reached out to Tasha to see if they could implement the program there. As part of the city's Thrive Coalition, and we have a national call-in. I did bring up the COAT program, and the New York City Mayor's Office was interested as well, some of their policy folks. So it is something that's, you know, becoming product, or becoming well-known. The, in terms of its success, just from baseline, between, this will be June 1st and July 1st, they interacted, they being the COAT team, interacted with 107 persons with substance use disorder. Over half of them, 61, or 57%. And I do have a memo that I guess I can forward to council. That, that didn't get forward, did it? The memo?
No.
Okay, yeah, I'll forward that. That 60, 61 people, 57 of whom did enter to treatment after contact with the COAT team. And 40% of the total, or 42 persons, it was a direct result of the COAT team. So one example that Tasha likes to talk about is they had a ED in the hospital on Monday, and by Friday, the person was in inpatient in Baltimore. So they really focus on kinda that short-term peer support, getting them in as quickly as possible. At this point, Tasha has contacts with the hospital, Salisbury EMS, Salisbury PD, Wycomico County Sheriff's Department. So pretty much if there's an, if there's an OD in Wycomico, COAT team's gonna know about it. They are available 24/7. They're on call 24/7, I should say. And they can, they respond at any time. In terms of their funding request, originally they requested 50, and Mayor suggested 35. They're looking to hire a actual COAT, where does it go, COAT Supervisor. So someone that would be under Tasha that would handle COAT, cause Tasha also handles targeted case management, the city's housing program, care coordination, and all peer recovery services. County is putting up 200,000, I think, this year. They put up 100,000 last year, and they're increasing it by another 100,000. So it will be much more robust next. So it, it will be much more robust next year, um, trying to think, anything else? Oh, I forgot to mention, so, in terms of the grand scheme of things, uh, between the first half of calendar year sixteen, so that would be, uh, January through June twenty sixteen. Overdoses increased three hundred percent, and that, that was probably the big thing, so it, it tripled. Once the COE team started operating, and that's the second half of calendar year sixteen, so June, July twenty sixteen to December twenty sixteen, there was actually a ten percent decrease in overdoses. So, as Tasha said, it isn't just a result of the COE team, but they definitely were a part of that. Um, so, you know, year over year it tripled, and then the COE team came in, and year over year it decreased by ten percent. Um, so, you know, they really are doing tremendous work, um, and I think the mayor said he actually got a call from someone at the Weinberg Foundation that was wondering how Wycomico County is the only county male in dropping their ODs. Um, so, you know, it really is a robust program that's working. I think those are just kind of the big points, any other questions?
If you could forward that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Okay.
Any questions on COE?
Great work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, and do you want me to talk about the homeless program?
Yes.
Okay. So, you appropriated, you being council, seventy-five thousand dollars last year, um, to house ten chronically homeless persons. Um, we received grant funding for two more, so we have a total of twelve vouchers. To date, we have used ten of those vouchers, so we s- or, yeah, we've used ten. With the person who passed away, we have nine active, but with two families, we've been able to house twelve people so far. And we have three more vouchers that we hope to use by the end of the fiscal year. So, you, you know, you requested that we house ten people, and hopefully by the end of the fiscal year, we'll be able to house sixteen. Um, so I've been trying to make the most with my money. In terms of what we've requested, um, between the case manager position, which is almost entirely grant-funded. And the housing program, we've requested seventy-six thousand dollars, twenty thousand is for the case manager position, fifty-six thousand is for the homeless program. With that fifty-six thousand, um, I should still be able to add an additional three to five vouchers, depending on, um, the amount of income that these individuals have. I am requesting that we waive the income requirement, um, for this year, uh, to allow individuals that, uh, have applied for disability and, um, been denied because of lack of medical records can still be housed. As far as I'm concerned, as long as they meet the definition of chronically homeless, they're homeless, um, and they're in need, uh.
How much is for the case manager?
Twenty thousand, the breakdown is CDBG, twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
Twenty thousand for the case manager?
Uh, for, in terms of, this is just the funding streams.
Okay.
The entire case manager should cost around sixty thousand with benefits, so it's, uh, twenty-eight thousand five hundred from CDBG. Eight thousand from FY eighteen Emergency Solutions Grant, and that's projected, we have not received that award yet. Twenty thousand from council, and approximately five thousand from FY seventeen ESG, which we already received. Any questions?
Yeah, I, um. Just by logic tells me, is it, is it easier to find the candidates a place, or have them want to go into a place during the winter as opposed during the summer?
Yes, but at the same time, there's less homeless people in the winter, um, generally it's over the summer that our numbers really spike. Uh, there's a combination of factors to that, one is Ocean City, so during the winter, the motels, they, you know, rent for places that can, people can afford. And then summer hits, and they all get evicted, and then OCPD usually kicks them over here. Then the other thing is, uh, and I can't, I don't like have any reliable data on this, but anecdotally, it appears that family members feel worse for their fellow family members during the winter than they do during the summer. Um, I hear a lot more people getting kicked out of their mothers, or boyfriends, or girlfriends, or wherever during the summer, cause it's like, well, you can actually sleep outside. Whereas during the winter, it's, well, no, it's cold out, and I'm gonna freeze, um, but that's really anecdotal.
And do you have, uh, actual problems with some people who do not want to be transitioned into, into shelters?
We've had, uh, shelters or housing?
Housing.
Um, we've had a couple, um, that certainly fit the bill, uh, I would say offhand, probably around ten people. I would say that, you know, don't want it, and that's a combination of just. Not, not responsibility as much as, a combination of severe mental illness and just being on the street for so long. It, I kind of, it's analogous to an individual who, you know, has been incarcerated for ten years, and then they get out, and, yeah, they, they just, they, they aren't used to that kind of atmosphere. And these individuals that I am speaking of are frequently in and out of incarceration, um, so they are the individuals that we're trying to target because they're the most expensive, and many of those individuals we have housed. I mean, ever- the average length of time of homelessness between those people that we've housed is about four years. I mean, we, we have one woman who's been on and off the streets for ten years, one person one year, um, I mean, it really is all over the place, so it's not that we aren't successfully targeting those individuals that are costly, if you will, but within that larger population of costly chronically homeless people, there are some that just don't want it.
But I asked you one other.
Yeah, of course, as many as you want.
Are there any restrictions for those who have come out of prisons?
Uh, what, what do you mean by restrictions?
Like you can't felony, or.
Oh.
Or you are able to house them because of felonies.
So the restrictions that the mayor wanted me to place, um, and, and that I agree with are any type of sex offenses, I mean, that's just, you know, pretty much all programs, including federally funded programs. You can't be convicted of a sex offense, um, and then the top-tier felonies, so murder, attempted murder, aggravated assault, battery, intent with a deadly weapon. And. I think it's the other ones, like a weapon in, using a weapon while commencing a burglary or something like that, just whatever the top-tier, um, felonies are.
Well, now I ask you another question.
Could you speak into the mic?
Yeah, wouldn't you think that somebody who has a sex offense or a murder charge, or attempted murder charge, would be more safer to society if they were housed than to be scattered out, at least you would know their location?
Right, I, I, I agree with that, um, and, and one of the things that we do have a problem with on the shore is a lack of supervised sex offender housing, but at the same time, no one really wants to live next to supervised sex offender housing, and we as a municipality would be assuming a level of risk that, I mean, even I personally, as risky as I may feel, would, would not really be comfortable with, particularly when it comes to sex offenders. Many other housing programs have actually found among some of their best clients are murderers, ironically, or individuals who have, you know, been charged with attempted murder. Do you, could, there could be a variety of different reasons for that, when it comes to sex offenders, most psychologists say sex offenders cannot be rehabilitated. Um, I mean, particularly when it comes to the most egregious, so I really just. That's, that's not something that I would even personally feel comfortable with having that liability. Yes, I, I mean, I know many, not many, but several homeless persons who are convicted sex offenders. I think that they are more dangerous being on the street, but is that the local government's responsibility? I, I don't think so personally. But I, I don't have an answer to that question, I guess.
Anything else?
I'm thinking.
Okay.
But I don't wanna be jipped today, so.
He's not here, so someone has to be.
I'm just kind of like stuck here because if you're saying it's not the governments, the local governments.
Well, you're, you're.
Wait, let me finish, let me finish what I'm saying, if it's not the local government's business to house these people, which are maybe sex offenders, murderers, attempted murderers, how do you find it you're able to house people who are really still unstable because of medical, mental instabilities?
Because of their track record, for lack of a better term.
We'll talk about this another time.
Okay, yeah, no, I'd, I'd be happy to discuss it further.
We will, we will.
Um, I mean, it's, it's, it's a debate within the homeless field and community na- nationally.
Because I deal with homeless too.
Right.
Um, through my church.
Uh-huh.
And. It's just, I don't know, it's just sad, and it's just like we push people to the side that do have prior, prior criminal records. Who have a chance to reform, I'm not saying just a sex offender, who have opportunities to reform, and we're just shunning them because they have crimes, have committed crimes. But we're housing people who have mental issues, and they're more prone to commit crimes and have committed some crimes, I'm not saying that they're to the extent that they're felony crimes, but I, 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 I. We, we could weigh our options a little better than we do, I mean, than we have.
Even with, even with a, a sex offender, and, you know, churches are struggling with this too.
Yes.
As far as you cannot have anybody involved in youth ministry who is a sex offender.
Well, I understand that.
And there's, and I, and I think the other piece is, is when we're, when we're housing people, there's also certain restrictions on sex offenders from the state level. So they can't be near parks, they can't be near schools.
Could I, could I interrupt?
There's a whole.
I, I think what I'd like to do, this is, this is way, we've sort of gotten off the tack. I would, I would entertain that we could have a discussion about this at, at one of the work sessions.
Yeah.
And invite Theo to come in and discuss it, cause this, this discussion right now has gone way past, uh, the budget thing, so if I could ask you to do that, I would, uh, I would.
Well, I said it a while ago, I'll rather discuss it another time.
Are there any other, uh, budget question, oh, uh, real quick grants, um. Wait, Keith, why is sixty, oh, never mind, is the sixty-five, that's for cops, right? Okay, um, just real quick on grants, uh, the police department and myself and Mr. Cordry decided that it is better accounting practice to transfer the money into the grant account ahead of time, as opposed to transferring it out, back into the general fund when we close out the grants. So that's why last year we, uh, approved twenty-seven thousand dollars for the various personnel matches. The FY eighteen increase is a result of the cops grant, the cops grant pays for fifty-six percent of total costs. Whereas we have to cover the remaining forty-four percent, and that increases steadily year over year. And then, do we wanna switch to the actual authorization sheet, or? Uh, schedule C, sorry.
Uh, schedule C?
Yeah.
Can you jump there?
Uh, I'm asking council.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
While he's doing that, is part of the target as far as grants, uh, are, are we looking at specific ones for veteran homelessness too, is there, is there some for that?
So the veteran homelessness, we're just gonna be, we're just trying to target individuals who are veterans through our housing program. Um, the, all the veteran homeless grants are used by other agencies, um, and there is one individual, um, that is a veteran who has refused VA services and declined two separate offers of housing through us, we are gonna offer him a third chance. But with him housed, that would pretty much effectively end veteran chronic homelessness, um, and I think the veteran homeless body, if you will, thinks that they can end it this year. Um, twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen entirely, so. In terms of the council authorization sheet, uh, I need to double-check a couple of these things. For instance, uh, the body armor for local law enforcement, that actually needs to be removed, and I apologize, I didn't do that ahead of time. Um, and then ESIC, I need to double-check on that amount, everything else is fairly standard, um, it's the same as last year. Safe Streets potentially could increase last year, um, if you remember, we went to council for eighty-eight thousand dollars for equipment purchases. We don't really know if they're gonna give us that money again, cause it was kind of, they had money left over, so potentially we could see an increase in Safe Streets, most likely not. And then Community Development Block Grant, because of all the stuff that's going on with the federal budget, um, until two nights ago, we didn't have a federal budget for the last quarter of the year. So, or last half of the year, so HUD was unable to calculate what our share of the CDBG would be, so we still don't know, but the most we've ever received is three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Most likely, we're gonna get approximately two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, um, but in previous years, we would have known weeks ahead of time how much our share was. And there's nothing exciting, if you will, in any of the grants, the Edward Byrne Memorial, that's the one that last year we used for public security cameras. And this year, as we discussed at council, we'll be doing the same thing, um, everything else is just routine law enforcement stuff. Any questions?
No, Theo, um, you had mentioned the Weinberg Grant, I've.
Oh.
The wine, about the opioid, uh, they were interested.
Oh, yes, they had reached out to the mayor and.
Well, the Wein, the Weinberg Grant, um, at least for the last couple of years, have been looking for, cause they have very few on the eastern shore.
Yeah.
So I, if, if we could.
One of, one of the reasons, one of the reasons that I, I wanted to hire a case manager was to pursue more of those grant opportunities. Because as, as I discussed with Keith and the mayor, um, I'd hoped to get more grant funding for the homeless program and other programs this year. I decided instead to use some of those grant funds for the case manager, um, and that would allow me to pursue other funds. We've discussed Weinberg in three separate contexts, the community center, the COE program, and the homeless program. So I would be very interested in pursuing that this upcoming fiscal year, um, for any and all of those purposes.
Good. Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Thanks.
They're here.
They're here?
Mm-hmm.
Good. We're a little late, but that's okay, well, we're actually early, but we're late. Jen. Yeah, we'll take a couple, yeah. Yeah, we'll take a break, and then she can come in and we'll get set up, okay, just let me know when you're ready. Take care.